Little house in here and hallway. Jan, if you can take a roll call, please.
Sure. Adnor?
Here.
Strands here, Carter?
Here.
You know, Gurley?
Here.
Spomler?
Here.
Shindel? Here. Garth Brad?
Here.
All present.
Ken, can you read us a pledge? Okay. Given the hallway participants that we have, we're going to start off with student recognition and reports first.
We wanted to thank you for having us tonight. My name is Danielle Dawson. I am one of the head coaches of our dance program.
I'm Katie Bull. I am the other head coach of the program.
We had a very successful season this year. Instead of Katie and I talking to you, some of our dancers would like to say a few words about the season. So we have sophomore Isabella Hanky and junior Michaela Randall. We're going to say a few words about our season.
Um, we would like first, we would first like to thank our parents, family, friends, and all who have supported us through our dance season this year. Um, we would also like to thank the businesses that supported us a little bit about our season this year. We were blessed with two new head coaches this year. And with that, our program had changed a little and it changed for the good. We started competing at more competitions, performing at almost every home basketball game. With competing more, our mindset changed as a team to wanting to place and making it to state. With this mindset, practice and season was not easy. We learned our prom routine in August and we have been, have been perfecting it up till state. We spent hours during each, we spent hours drilling each individual moment. From there, we gained two new members and we learned our hip hop routine in November. We have been working and striving for state placement all season. We endured many challenges this season, such as inconsistent practice spaces, broken bones, high intensity practices, you name it. We pushed through it. All of these challenges we went through together only made us stronger.
So we've been dancing for about seven months now. Dance has been our first priority for us for so, so long. So when you have to, when you have to put all the whole season's work into one performance, the energy and the emotions are the highest they've been all year long. All year. We have been looking forward to this day the whole season. This has been the day we think about when we push ourselves during our last fillouts and last reps. Walking off the regional floor after knowing we crushed our team is the best feeling ever. And hearing your name called as you're sitting in the circle, holding your teammate's hand, is even a better feeling. Every second of practice is worth this feeling. This was everyone's first time going to state. The feeling of stepping out on the safe floor is amazing. When we sat at awards in the circle and held hands, it was a crazy feeling hearing our names called. We accomplished more than what we felt was possible for our team. Our season is not over yet. We still have a few games and our kids' clinic is this week.
So this was the first time that our program brought home a state trophy. Um, it is very big and very pretty to our showcase case at the high school. If you have not seen it, um, definitely check that out. The last time that this program has brought prom and hip hop to state was over five years ago. So to be able to bring two routines to the lacrosse center, being surrounded by teams from all over the state our size was a pretty impressive feeling. And then hearing our names called as top five in the state is, like these kids are saying, indescribable. So it was a really cool weekend and we're very proud that we could represent O'Connell Falls.
So the goal is to try and get an opportunity to acknowledge your, your work. We hope that you understand. We appreciate all of the efforts that, that you've been involved in. Uh, you represented us well. Uh, you carried O'Connell Falls to state and we really appreciate that. And then, we're president.
Yeah. Um, so we have a camera behind you that unfortunately can't see you all. So I'm going to stand over here and when you, when I call your name, you can come up and, uh, grab your certificate and smile at the camera when you head back. We'll do that for your picture afterwards. Um, Isabella Hanky? Congratulations. Evie Cole? Congratulations. Emily, congratulations. Madison Duncan? Congratulations Natalie. There you go. Greta Coller? Congratulations. Braylon Merle? Congratulations. Congratulations Taylor. Danica Momars? Congratulations. Matt Hogan? Congratulations. Kayla Randall? Uh, Gracie Walcott? Congratulations. There you go. Leah Mortal? Neela Cherry? Jessica Wolford? Abby Bud? Congratulations. Is it right that summer and, um, we have some missing maybe? What's that?
Summer and Erin are.
Summer and Erin aren't here. I'm going to give these, give these to you then. Actually, I'll give them to Daniel Dawson. I, uh, give you those. Before I get, before I get Katie up here, just the certificate, I didn't mention what it says. So it's a certificate of recognition. It says, this certificate is presented to, and then the, the participant's name in recognition of placing fifth at the W A C P C. Uh, state competition presented this thirteenth day of February, uh, two thousand twenty-three. So Katie, you're the last one. Congratulations.
There's a lot of us.
You know how to take a picture.
Lift it higher. Congratulations girls. Next, next up, we've got the fifth grader recorder karate in Abrams Elementary, I believe.
And then Haley, Haley. And then the report really begins. So okay, bye. Or does it have a touch enable now?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Just reminder, Mr. Baumgart, they can't see from home if they're standing on that side of the camera.
Okay. Alright. I just want to double check you a little sound check. Okay. Just want to make sure it's not too loud. So my name's Jesse Baumgart. I'm the elementary music teacher at Abrams Elementary. Tonight I brought with us four lovely ladies who have been doing really well with our recorder karate program. Uh, and it's something that's been developed by another music teacher about twenty years ago, going through scope and sequence of the appropriate best practices for learning a recorder. So the kids that you're going to see today, we're going to feature, um, uh, let's go in order, Greta, uh, Golick, uh, Aish Golick, and then Amelia Luoma, followed by Haley Fenlin, and last but not least is Haley Watson. And, uh, what they have been working on is basically coming in and working with me one-on-one on Mondays and Fridays before kind of the beginning of our school time start and getting one-on-one help. And these four ladies have really excelled in the program as well as the other fifth graders. So we're just kind of showing you what's been going on at Abrams and celebrating student success with these four ladies tonight. Right? Without further ado, we'll have, and I believe this already was sent out to the board, so I won't read to you. And then, um, every month, the, the students are recognized for their achievements in the recorder in front of the whole student body through something called pause light. So first off, it's going to be Greta and Amelia performing Old MacDonald Had A Farm. Alright, plus have you ready to go ladies? Before you begin playing, was there anything you wanted to share with the board? Why this program has been so successful with you, Greta?
I like doing playing my parts. I want to get the black belt. I want to get the black belt because I'm, I get appreciated from high school.
Alright, wonderful. And Amelia?
I like doing belt testing because I want to get better with playing other instruments and this is a really good start.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright ladies. So this is a student self-paced program. Um, and in this case, they were learning a low D in this portion of their belt testing experience. And a low D is the more fingers you put onto the recorder, the harder it is to achieve that low sound without popping it up the octave. So well done ladies. Haley Fenlin's going to be playing Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. And in her piece, she's traveling away from playing a normal F natural to an F sharp, which is featured in this piece, which is a different configuration of your fingers to play. Um, Haley, is there anything you wanted to share?
I would like to achieve my black belt and hopefully I can get farther than what I did where my sisters.
A little sibling rivalry. I love it. And she's, uh, she has two older sisters who have done extremely well on the recorder as well. So I could understand why. Alright, Haley, when you are ready.
Could you have them move in a little bit just so that people at home can see her play?
Sure. This way?
Yeah, both of them towards the board.
Alright, why don't you come on in and?
There we go.
And our last feature today is Haley Watson, who achieved her black belt in December of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, she got through rather quickly. She, she is one who doesn't want to speak. So from my indirect mother, um, uh, she said she would be practicing like twenty to thirty minutes every night at all hours of the day. So I understand why she's progressed so quickly. So she would be a typical student who would be ordering maybe two to three belts a month. So on this one, she's going to play the red line or the red notes, and I'm going to play the notes that are marked in black. So she's going to be completely independent of me. And, uh, the way that the parts work out there, they don't really fit together harmonically. So we travel a little bit on the side of polyphonic music here. So are you ready? Hey, there we go. I was a little worried about this piece and then she came in this morning when we practiced, like she was ready to rock and roll. Um, it's okay if I make it just bigger. There we go. Here we go. Right. And that really concludes our presentation. Is there any questions from the board members or?
This is awesome.
Thank you.
I just want to say how brave are you girls as fifth graders to come in and play your music? You guys did amazing, every single one of you. Thank you so much for sharing your growing talent with us.
Thank you, board.
For the student representative report?
Right. So these are the class slides for February twenty twenty-three. So for student council, student council decided to get in the Valentine's Day spirit. Student council decided to offer students a chance to buy Valentine's Day goodies. The students had to buy the treats in advance during their lunch or cafe period. And the turn student council would hand out the goodies on Valentine's Day during eighth hour. And students could buy a small bag of chocolates or a strawberry crush for their brush. At BLA, we hosted our fifth annual community cancer collection on January twentieth and raised money for local families fighting cancer. We, we raised just shy of three thousand dollars with bucket raffles, a basketball test, a bake sale, and by selling sunglasses, shirts, and piravita bracelets. On February fifth, FBLA also competed at regionals and our project announced that fourteen state qualifiers for twenty twenty-three. They will compete at state on April seventeenth and eighteen. On February eighth, they visited three businesses to learn more about business world. They toured WI six, board and brush and theme apparel. They learned about career opportunities and educated need to purchase, pursue them. Link. Link leaders met with their group and worked on activities focusing on scheduling and study skills. Their peer relationships are building stronger and the freshmen are gaining skills and becoming part of the high school community. Forensics. Forensics competed in their first conference meet in Marinette on February sixth and had many participants that earned medals. In Barago, placing second was Ireland Paett. Placing second in moments of history was Maria Slade. In play acting, earning a second place with Sophia Coller, Elena Blazer, and Sydney Wirsba. In poetry, earning a first place with Stephanie Vasquez Menjarras. Riley Stapleton earned a second place in public address speaking, earning a first place finish was Bernanda Gonzalez and earning second place with Elena Ten. The O'Connell Falls forensics team earned a second place overall. This is the first time in many years that they've earned a second place, which is really great. And they are super excited for their next competition that is happening today in Surrey. The Drama Club. The Drama Club is into rehearsals for their spring production of the classic play Art Town. Performances are scheduled for March seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth in the O'Connell Falls area of PAC. Currently, there are thirty students involved in the production, either onstage or offstage. As this marks the twenty-fifth anniversary of O'Connell Falls Drama under the direction of Mr. Gander, a reception is being placed for after school, for after the performance on Saturday. Drama alumni are being contacted with hopes that they will be able to attend. Mr. Gander will also be appearing onstage with his student sets of bands. That's all we have updated for this month.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, citizen participation. Okay. So we've got three on citizen participation. Uh, chat early. I would just, uh, mention that I think we've got, uh, I'll, I'll mention the other names after chat's done and then, then mention the names through, but I just want to remind everybody, we usually get no more than five minutes for, uh, um, citizen participation. So yeah.
So I'll take you to remember, we, I got a lot of phone calls as a board member also that our taxes went way up because of referendum. Um, we got told that our taxes would go down if it didn't pass. It would go down to twenty-six per thousand. If it didn't pass, it would go down thirty-seven cents. That did not happen. My taxes and everybody else's taxes went sky high. We got told that it was a fair market value what was going up. That is not true. It is at the assessed value. So I said something to the city. City wrote me a letter. The district claim or falls by claiming home value increase is a reason for the tax increase. As you can see from your tax bill, their assessed value on your home did not change from last year. As you stated, the assessed value is based on how the mill rate in your tax are calculated. The overall assessed value for the city of O'Connell Falls did increase from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two by nine thousand, nine thousand forty thousand dollars. But that is a good thing. If we would not have seen that, increase the over, overall meal rate would have increased even more. Concept of dividing the same pizza for more, more people, the pieces get smaller. From twenty twenty-one to two twenty twenty-two, the mill rate increased from twenty-four, six, six, three, two, five, two, to twenty-seven point zero, one, six, one, four, zero. A difference of two point three, five, two, eight, eight per thousand. Unfortunately, one point seven, six, zero, two, five, five was the school district increase. So you think that the tax bill is calculated by the assessed value, time the mill rate is absolutely correct. I attached the spreadsheet of the mill rate calculation for your reference. So obviously mine didn't go up. Everybody's went up. Mine went up. Everybody's went up. So I think a lot of people thought their taxes were going down and they didn't. So I don't know who gave us the information. I don't know if we got the wrong information from the superintendent or where it came from. Next step. Next thing is there's a lot of staff members cannot. Next thing is, there's a lot of staff members cannot come to talk to the HR because they figured that they don't have a target on their back. As a community member slash board member, that we should really think about hiring HR to have our staff member feel comfortable. That's all I gotta say.
Next up, Tess Maggio. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
My name is Tess Maggio, and I'm a senior at the high school. I'm going to tonight to bring awareness to a situation involving a parent and a school board candidate. I followed Janet McMahon and did and did speak with Mr. Moore and Mr. Monahan, and I really do appreciate their due diligence in investigating the issue. I would have waited until the full investigation was finished, but I really didn't want to wait until March's board meeting to bring it up. At the basketball game in Clintonville last Thursday, I was one of five students other than the JV team in the student section. We sat the entire game, but cheered and clapped when we felt it was appropriate. In the second half, one of the JV players commented on how we were losing, so it would be embarrassing to stand. As a result, we continued to sit. Directly after the game, Carrie Hill approached the student section and asked us, are you really going to refuse to F-word stand? We all looked at Mrs. Hill with shock, no one responded. She then walked away from our group, but after a few seconds, she turned back around, pointed directly at me and said, that's shitty, you are shitty. After this, she walked away. I will admit, Mrs. Hill's actions toward me caused towards me caused me to cry, so I called my mom to explain what happened. Later that night, I along with two of my peers who also attended this game came up with a respectful message to send to Mrs. Hill via Facebook Messenger. This message stated that we didn't appreciate her actions towards us and that it was ultimately uncalled for. Nowhere in her response was an apology. I am standing here in front of you today because even though I'm graduating in a few months, I am also a big sister to three younger girls who will attend this school district for years to come. I would expect more of a school board candidate and hope that her behavior is not a reflection of what the district would expect from all of its representatives. As I've stated before, I do trust that Mr. Moore and Mr. Monahan will do what they can with it with their means. But to me, this is too important to wait until the next meeting. I do hope that she is held accountable, and thank you for your time.
Next up, Kelly Perkman.
Good morning, board. I'm here again to bring forth the need for human resource director. The district is large enough to warrant such a position. I share shared with you at the January board meeting only some of the instances that were handled appropriately. Excuse me, not handled appropriately. I hope that each of you were able to reflect on the document that I provided and have asked yourselves these questions. If I were employed by the district, how would it feel if this was me? Would I want to continue working here? Would I recommend others to work in this district? Would I just keep my head down in hopes that someone else would try to make changes as I have a family to provide for? Am I doing what's best for the students and families, not allowing staff to come forward or the school board to have an open communication and transparency? At the board meeting in January, the board approved the payout for support staff for unused PTO days. While the presentation wasn't hundred percent accurate as presented, the PTO for support staff is not based on employees working thirty hours per week. It's actually a thousand forty hours in a fiscal year for their primary job. So those that are part-time ten and twelve-month staff staff would actually qualify. After that was approved, the support staff handbook was updated and posted for the support staff on the human resource page. However, the handbook that was updated was a copy dated from August sixth, two thousand eighteen, and as such has many items not accurate for prior board-approved revisions and administrative changes. Some examples are twelve-month staff have the day after Thanksgiving off as a paid holiday, but the chart doesn't show this. Professional staff support professional development development for support staff is paid at a regular hourly rate. It's not at the fourteen dollars stated in the documents. Long-term disability is listed for staff with twenty hours. This was changed to thirty hours last year with those being twenty hours grandfathered in. Bus driver incentives and bonuses are not listed in this copy. Appendix A for support staff is showing longevity pay in addition to incorrect rates for trip mileage for the bus drivers. These are just a few I wanted to point out to you. Who approved this revision to the that was provided to the staff? The person whom the Board of Education has deemed to be human resources, the superintendent and or the operations manager. I appreciate each of you board members for taking the thankless job to run our school district. Are you going to disregard these concerns and put all of your faith in believing what are you being selectively told by the superintendent and operations manager? I encourage each of you to personally reflect. Remembering that you asked each of us taxpayers in the O'Connell Falls School District to elect you. Are you upholding the expectations of these duties that they bestowed upon you? It's time to listen, stand aside alongside all of the staff and make the changes to improve the workplace culture in hopes of retaining these employees before it's too late. I've had people ask me, why don't you go to the media? I'm coming to the board first, I'm going the proper channels. Thank you.
Okay, that's all on the list for citizen participation. Move on to approval of the minutes for the January ninth and the January twenty-third meetings.
Clint, I'll move for approval for both sets of nets.
Second, Dan, second by Ken. Uh questions? Questions discussion? None, all in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Motion carried. Um we're actually gonna move up and next next we had on the agenda, the financial report. But just given the kind of list of things that we have to go through, uh we do have some representatives here to discuss the annexation and new business. Um so we're gonna move the annexation uh topic up uh right now.
So as a board, um before Mr. Kuhn shares his information, uh we received, as you know, collaboration with the city to move forward with the annexation. At that time, um we were going to do that together with the municipality, which we're gonna talk about. And then there were some actions that took place since you, the board, took action. So he's here tonight to share more information with you, um be able to answer questions that you might have. And then we will ask the board to consider taking action on the modified annexation.
I'll I'll kind of go from the beginning. Uh we approached the municipal utility of approach Dean regarding the annexation and doing a joint petition to try to simplify things on the city end of things. Uh we worked with the city on that to come up with a joint petition. As the joint petition went through, uh an opportunity presented itself for the utility. Once that opportunity was presented, we went all to our reach out to our legal counsel um to discuss the opportunity. In in discussing that opportunity, uh some concerns were were brought up with the way the petition had gone through and the utilities portion of that petition. Um number one, uh it should legally be done uh separate because we are a municipal entity. And you guys would be considered a private enterprise. Um and number two, um including both of those properties on one petition would uh present some complications moving forward as far as the electric utility and the territory um and the right to serve that property. After consulting with our legal counsel, we consulted with the league, the city's legal counsel, those both those legal councils came up with a recommendation that we rescind the previous motion and separate the two petitions because it'll simplify um things moving forward. With that said, um it is our understanding from from conversations with with uh OEC that uh in doing in doing this petition for annexation and annexing the property, it would give the right to serve to O'Connell Falls Municipal Utilities for the electric service. There are other uh avenues that you could go through. I I would say, though, that by not annexing, it would complicate the sewer and water aspect of things. And it could potentially lead to more complications down the line as far as electrical service. So I just wanna be fully transparent. Um submitting that annexation paperwork would would essentially guarantee that um you as the board and the school district that we're working with O'Connell Falls Municipal Utilities for an electric service for the property.
Had it been considered that OEC would be the power supplier?
Well, there was there's, as you're probably aware, territory laws is very convoluted.
Yeah.
Um our main concern uh wasn't necessarily working it out with our neighbors. It was with the other utilities that are in the area that could potentially throw a monkey wrench in. Um they're kind of the uh the giants in the room, so to speak. Um so uh there there could be discussion about that. Um if it were to not annex, um there's there's a few avenues that could happen. In my mind, I guess, as as the city and the municipality goes, if this is annexed, it was from from my perspective, it was going to be us serving the property. So and we have had communication with O'Connell Electrical that says as such um that would be served by O'Connell Falls Municipal Utilities.
Okay.
So I can go one step further. I've also had a phone call with O'Connell Electrical. They expressed an interest in being able to bid on the electrical service or that property. But it's my understanding that the only way that happens is if you decide not to move forward with the annexation. So as Greg was just sharing, if you move through with the annexation, then that comes off the table. So as your superintendent, the intent was to try to build a middle school on property and take what was understood to be the smoothest route to get there. And the smoothest route was having conversation with the city uh two and a half years ago already about this process and their intent to bring that into the city. If you, as a school district, did purchase the property. Now, one of the things that has gotten back to me is concerns about conversations that were had at a a municipality meeting back months ago where a question was posed about is the thought process to annex the entire property. And at the time, my response was I wasn't sure that if there was a way that a portion of that could potentially stay in the city or the town of Stiles and a portion of that go to the city, um that I would be open to entertaining that. When I had a conversation with Peter at the city, um he was pretty straightforward that his intent would be to annex the entire property. And when we talked about that, the discussion went around. The school district doesn't absolutely need all ninety-plus acres of that for their for our school, okay? With all that in mind, the school district doesn't know exactly where the placement of that school is going to be. We also, at this point in the planning process, don't know exactly where all the roads are going to be. So to be able to say that we were gonna annex off a piece of it and leave a piece of it would have convoluted the process. Somebody has got it in their mind that there's already some predetermined notion that we're building houses on that property. At this point, there's no plans other than trying to build a middle school and whatever road works and whatever other things go into needs of the middle school. Now, could there potentially be houses on that property down the road? Yeah, it's a potential, but that's something that I would anticipate is years down the road. And that totally determines on what's in the best interest of the students of the school district and what this board would decide. So in talking with Peter, again, trying to be thoughtful of the timeframe and all the needs of getting a middle school built, the thought processes to annex the entire piece. So I just wanted to bring that forward. We talked about transparency, and we strive to be transparent with that stated. Even in meetings like this, there's a message that you try to convey. And then there's whatever the message is that people hear, which sometimes those are not the same. So at the time, when I was at Stiles, I was trying to be transparent and say that, you know, I understand Stiles would like to have a portion of that stay within the town of Stiles. But I've never been evasive about my primary interest is what I feel is in the best interest of the students of the district. So that's why what's being brought forward to you is to annex the property to the city, and then we can move forward with planning for the school.
Any other other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a, so we're doing the whole, yeah.
Peter, is there anything that I left out?
I don't think so, but I mean that I think that summarizes our conversation. I guess the second part is um the city jurisdiction, they call extraterritorial, which is that it's in the interest of the city not to have um non-sewer water right on the borders of us. Um so again, whatever that future of the property is, again, whether you're doing this in middle school or any other development down there, um you wouldn't wanna have a well in the septic um right on the edges of of the city. And um that same interest typically of the DNR and other things, they really wanna see that, you know, in a treatment-type process. So again, that was just, I think, the the main point of our conversation in terms of looking at that as two parcels versus one. It was really that intention of if you're gonna do this, do this development. And certainly, I think we did a little bit more discussion in terms of where roads might be in the future really to be determined, but I think it would be really hard to consider that two parcels and and make much more complications to have it as one in a town and one in the city.
Yes, the main thing is the board had decided in the past, we're going through this process. Now we've just determined that instead of doing the dual annexation, we're basically just splitting it up. So we're we're basically reapproving what we approved before. And it's not as though we had any part in the in the other piece that we were just including in the application, so. Guess we're looking for a.
Yeah, Clint, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the draft position. A petition for annexation is presented to the board.
One second.
That's from my Brian, second by Sarah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, uh we'll move back up to the uh section we would have been going to, the financial report, people have payment requests.
Take a look at your financial report and cash on hand as of January one, two thousand twenty-three. Amount three, none, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one, twenty-eight. January receipts, amount two million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred, two dollars. A few different ones I want to bring your attention. One is uh property taxes, so that's that first installment of two million, eighty-five thousand, two twenty. And you can also see transportation aid as well as categorical aid in the receipts. Looking at January disbursements, are in the amount of two million, one hundred, seven thousand, six, seventy-eight, leaving then cash on hand as of February first of three thousand, eight hundred, nineteen thousand, two hundred, fifty-two dollars. Going then to February in disbursements in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then February receipts of four thousand, three oh two, leaving then cash on hand as of February thirteenth of three million, four hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Any questions on that first page? Okay, hearing none, going to the funds. Fund twenty-one, as we've talked about, is now broken into three different sections. One is Veterans Memorial, uh change there sixty-seven dollars in interest, leaving a balance of twenty-eight thousand, eight, fifty-one. The scholarship fund, we had twenty-two thousand, six, ninety-nine in donations and five hundred and one dollars in interest from the CD that left the balance of sixty-two thousand, eight, forty-seven. And then looking at the activity fund portion of fund twenty-one, you can see there that the receipts of thirty-three thousand, eight, forty-three and the expenditures in the amount of forty-seven thousand, seven, thirty-five left a balance of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Again, as we go through these, you're gonna see in multiple different areas where uh Kim's now working with some of these into CDs where that interest rate has come up and we're starting to experience a better yield with interest. Going to debt service funds, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, we had one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars in interest and that balance of two million, sixty-eight thousand, five oh four. Capital expansion fund forty-one, um for the newer board members, this is something that was passed years ago. It's twenty thousand dollars annually that goes into. It's twenty thousand dollars annually that goes into this fund. And those dollars are set aside for capital improvements on things like the track. That's over part of the football stadium and other capital projects that need capital improvements over time. So there was twenty thousand dollars that was put in there. That's our annual amount that's the positive. And then there's forty-four dollars in interest. And then you can see a balance of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Capital improvement fund forty-six, there was seven hundred and eighty-one dollars in interest, leaving us a balance of two million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. Again, that fund forty-six has matured. You know, we put that together more than five years ago and so those dollars are now available. And the thought process is, is as we move through with the capital referendum projects, we very well may be bringing to you the board some different projects around the district that were part of that first request that was not approved, but still need to be thought of. And those could potentially be funded with fund forty-six dollars as a part of our capital improvement. Also, fund forty-nine, which is now the dollars of the capital referendum, currently earned thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in interest and a balance of thirty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six dollars. So Kim has worked with Wisk, which is something that you approved at a past board meeting. She works with them as part of investing those dollars in very short-term timeframe. Fund seventy-three is Employee Benefit Trust Fund, change in interest of four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Expenditures of eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars with a balance of one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. Any questions on any of the funds? Okay. Dean, there's a, there's a difference in the, in the grand total on the report we received in the private meeting and what's listed on the agenda. What you do is just correct.
On the payment?
Yeah. Yeah, on the grant, on the checks written for approval.
Yeah, the agenda talks about one point four million and it's one point five on the printed agenda. Kim, do you know which one is the one we need to use?
Um, the one in the board packet is the correct one, not the one on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so the one, five, three, five, two, four, six?
Yep. Yep, the one that's in the, the one million, five thirty-five, two forty-six.
You're gonna tag it.
It's okay. Apologize for going on the agenda. Okay, Ken, Clint, that we approved the financial report and the payment request in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Call vote, please.
Wish I can, second?
I'll second.
Second by Jan. Any other questions or comments, discussion? Okay, Jan, if you can do a roll call, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Early? Bomber?
Yes.
Shindel?
Yes.
Strands?
Yes.
Adler?
Yes.
Carter brick?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, we're on to reports and discussions.
We'll start with month in review. One of the things that people may have noticed, we updated our referendum website. And so there's information of actions that are going on related to the capital referendum. You can take a look at that and we'll continue to update that as we get more information. Also had a chance to attend Losda Small School District collaboration during state convention. One of the things that continues to be a challenge for school districts across the state is identification of employees. And so people were sharing some of the methods that, you know, they're striving to implement and where it should be a more interesting place to come to work. And appreciated those folks sharing those thoughts. Also, middle school design team, I had a chance to visit three different school districts. Went to Luxembourg, Casco, Clintonville, as well as West appear. Members of the design team appreciated meeting with their staff and in some cases with their students. Shared the things that they appreciated about either their new school or the new additions that they were experiencing as well as some of the challenges, lessons learned. We have professional development with members of our admin team, our supervisory team. This is something that we've been planning now for the course of a year and trying to address some of the ways that we can improve as a leadership group. We have the first group going through right now and then we'll have a second group going through later this next fall. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Had a chance to thank our crossing guards and as well as our school counselors during appreciation week. So folks get a chance, when they see their crossing guards, maybe stop and tell them how much you appreciate them being out there. Just happened that on the day that we went out there and shared our appreciation, it was cold and blowing and snowing. And so they, they kind of chuckle and they appreciated that, we appreciated them. Leadership O'Connell County came and visited us, they do this annually. Shout out to our tech ed department. They did a nice job again of sharing their information of what they do with our students and some of the opportunities that they provide. The topic was teamwork and how we have a synergistic effect. If you're not familiar with the term synergy, the concept is one plus one equals three. So it's how do we work together and get a better outcome straighter than some of the pieces of the parts? So leadership of O'Connell County was appreciative of that and it worked out well. Also had a chance to work with high school. Reached out, shared that we're implementing a process to develop a skill set. As you know, Mr. Dan Moore has turned in his retirement paperwork. And so had an opportunity to meet with members of the high school team and get their feedback on what they feel is going to be critical for the next leader of the high school in their work collaboratively with our high school team. So we had a chance to talk about that, gather their feedback and then also share information about what that process looks like. And in a nutshell, we will be conducting interviews later this month. The members of the interview team will include certified staff, support staff from the high school as well as members of the admin team. One of the upcoming things that's coming down, and I think there's three members, if I remember seriously correct, I think it's Clint and Ken and Jan, we're all members of compensation committee. So we'll be reaching out to you here in the near future to set up a meeting where Kim and I can walk you through the forecast model that we're working with right now as well as potential ideas for staff compensation. As you know, fair compensation was one of the frustrations that were brought up in the survey here this past spring. And so it, it's something that we're trying to work on and determine how can we put our best foot forward. So we'll work with you, the, the compensation committee to try to develop some potential proposals that'll then be brought back to the full board this next month in March. Somewhere between there, we're also going to be sharing some of that information. We're, we're pulling together what they call a district staff advisory team. So we're trying to get folks from both certified and support staff who essentially help us get a little bit clearer picture on what some of the challenges are from the survey feedback that we've received. And obviously one of them being compensation, we want to try to fill their capacity to understand some of the pieces and then also get their feedback for us to better understand some of the thoughts from our staff. And that will then also be brought to you, the board, along with what the committee has, has come up with. And then whatever comes out of that, one of the actions will be exchanging proposals then most likely shortly thereafter with members of certified staff, so. That's the month in review portion, taking a look at, any questions on month in review?
The search for candidates for the high school principal resulted in a good yield?
Yep, yep, we, we posted it through WeCAMP. That closed, I worked with three other members of our admin team to review the candidates and in the process right now of reaching out to individuals, so. We'll get that taken care of and then we'll go forward. And I would imagine that our goal is to try to have a top candidate identified before the March board. So. And giving a look at transportation update. So we do not have any new drivers in training right now. As you know, a couple of months back, I shared with you that we had a couple of members that were in training, which was fantastic because those people did complete their C D L. They then entered into the system. Unfortunately, we had one, one bus driver that decided to step away from driving full-time. And then one of them is working in a substitute driver capacity. Right now, we are still continuing to run sixteen routes. We have seventeen route drivers, two of them work together on one route because they, they don't want to do morning and night, five days a week. So they split it. We currently have two sub-drivers with limited availability. And so we're able to cover the needs that we have right now. However, we're not able to expand back to the one mile piece. We continue to put out communications that we need drivers, so if anybody's interested in getting their C D L, please encourage them to contact Brandy at Transportation Garage. Otherwise you can contact here at the district office and we'll help you out. And just a reminder that we do pay people during the training phase. So while they're working on earning their C D L, they will be compensated.
Dean, was it posted somewhere that it's Bus Driver Appreciation Week this week?
Yep, we have Bus Driver Appreciation Week. I know that Brandy, Debbie, can you remind me, Brandy has been reaching out, I think, and there's been some pretty positive response with the community members and their businesses in the past?
Yeah, she sent a letter to the businesses, um, through the chambers and local businesses in town that was on push station. I think they had seven businesses donated, whether it was flowers or coffee or different things that they were going to hand out. District was putting on the lunch bar and having soup and stuff, the one that early releases that had lunch and.
So we really appreciate, appreciate the businesses and everybody that reached out to try to support that.
Yeah, and as a board member, I just want to thank every single bus driver right out there that's listening right now. And appreciate everything that you're doing. So just want to make that statement out loud.
Thank you.
And any other, any questions on transportation? Okay, then going to people count. So I think there's something in your packet that gives you an idea. You can see there's been a slight increase from September of twenty-two until January of twenty-three. And we have one of the lines updated, which is student sex within seats. So we've gone from sixteen ninety-six to seventeen oh one. And if you slide to the left there, you can see that we've experienced a trend where we continue to, to increase in our numbers. So that's a good trend to have. Any questions on the people ratios or the people counts? Then I think the last thing that's on my list is employee engagement. So one of the things that's, you can, I would think you would imagine it's been on our mind as leaders in the district. After we did the staff survey, trying to better understand the feedback that we've received and how we take action to address those concerns. So some of the things that were brought forward in the staff, one of the main ones was what was felt to be, to be fair compensation. As you're aware, this last, this last year, we did a two point five percent increase and then we did a thousand dollar stipend for staff members. Now, the C P I at that point was four point seven. And as we moved forward, we saw the C P I rising. We felt it was going to be high. We were correct, it looks like the C P I right now is eight point oh one. And they're also projecting into the future five percent for next year. So we didn't do the C P I this last year. One of the things that I've been working with Kim on, Kim and I have been working together to try to figure out, how can we work on that compensation level for our employees? So that's something that is happening behind the scenes, not just the forecast model, but also taking a look at how competitive are we with other school districts in our area? So it's not just season eight, it's also looking geographically. And some folks will say that, you know, it's going to be difficult to be competitive with school districts to our south, but the reality is we have to keep that, you know, in the forefront of our mind because a lot of our staff members live in that area. So, so that works going on behind the scenes besides the compensation piece. Concerns in regards to how do we improve communication between staff members and leaders, administrators and supervisors? I reached out and working with members of the buildings to try to understand what are some of the things that are happening already. So I'm going to just kind of go through some of the pieces, it's not all of them, but whether it's listening sessions, one-on-one, or in small groups, or in staff meetings to try to understand what are some of the challenges that staff are facing? How do we work together on that? Behavior was one of the pieces that was brought forward and how we, how we have consistency between classrooms and consistency between support staff, certified staff and administration. So there's been sit downs regarding school behavior, in some cases at the elementary, in some cases at secondary levels. How do we share and some of the leadership and the decision-making? So whether it be through the creation of some of those structural pieces at the elementary level, we created curriculum leaders to assist with some of the challenges that we have as well as team leaders and trying to understand what are the goals and how do we work together to make that happen? In some cases, it's committee work, again, behavior committees or response to intervention, committee work. And also one of the pieces that was brought forward is concerns in regards to workload. And how do we try to address the fact that some folks are feeling pretty overwhelmed with what they, they have to work on? Some of the pieces that administration is trying to do, again, sitting down with staff, prioritizing and coming up with timelines that are, are more thoughtful in regards to that. Some of the things that have been helpful is the support that you've done for early release time because those people are then able to work together with each other, work together with kids and also making communication to families, which otherwise those things are all being done outside of normal hours. I just wanted to bring forth, whether it's the staff militants that are going out to our employees, whether it's the electronic social media that's going out to the community. We're, we're trying to put our best foot forward in addressing things that have been shared with us and then circling back and, and asking the question, how is that working for us? I'm real hopeful that this advisory team that we're getting off the ground will be one more piece to that where you don't have to necessarily have everybody in one room, because obviously that's a lot of people. But if we can have representation, where are they going to be giving us feedback? Between that and then having larger group listening sessions, we're hopeful then that as we get to the next survey, we'll have more positive feedback to build from. Any questions on employee engagement piece?
Is it, or was it our intention to do that survey annually?
It's annually. What we did is we moved it to the fall. So it's scheduled to take place sometime this fall, twenty-three. And then it'll be annually after that, always in that fall time frame.
And even when you mentioned the behavior thing, that was, that was behavior as it relates to, you know, family interact, teacher and family interactions or teacher and student interactions, right? And how to.
I think the, one of the pieces is.
Situations.
Yeah, one of the consistencies or the pieces that was felt to be inconsistent is in some situations within a building, how things are handled between classrooms? What should be handled at a classroom level, what should be handled at an office level? And in some cases, that's communication, it's professional development, it's sharing back and forth of those expectations and trying to get consensus. And so it's, it's not, that was mentioned in multiple buildings, so it's something that we're, we're working on across the board right now.
I just brought that up because I wanted to make sure that it wasn't, you know, the, the topic was around how to handle, handle and address behavioral situations, not behavior issues with staff.
No.
Okay. That's it for reports and discussion, move on to old business. Always popular topic, we've got donations.
As you can see, again, there's a, a strong outpouring of donations from the community. So I wanted to just publicly thank those folks that have issued those and asked the board to consider taking. Wanted to just publicly thank those folks that have issued those and asked the board to consider taking action to accept the donations.
Hope that we accept the, uh, the donations and. With, with, uh, thanks to those community members that have made the donations. Second, motion by Ken, second by Chad. Any other discussion?
Just a, thank you from my end too. It's great to see everybody donating. A lot of good donors, donors there for sure.
Looks like at the steel most, some people need to pay a little more attention to, uh, football. But if they continue to not, we will readily accept that. We appreciate it. I mean, I think that's a great thing to go in for, that to link with, uh, lunch balances. That's fantastic. So. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Close, motion carried. Capital referendum update.
So just wanted to share with the board, uh, what we're looking at then over the next sixty days. So. As you are fully aware, um, the capital referendum was broken into three different areas. One being the middle school and the other two being secure entrances at our buildings as well as, uh, rough work throughout the district. So in the next sixty days, um. Secure entrance designs are going to be, I should say, like draft designs are going to be shared with, um, principals at each one of the schools. They will then have the opportunity to give feedback and then that will be brought to you, the board. Um, and once there's consensus on that, the. Nexus solutions will push that out for bidding and we can then start looking at timeframes to address the secure entrance work as well as the rough work. Um, as far as the middle school, the, actually the group is meeting tomorrow. And reviewing the site feedback that was generated through, um, the visits to the three districts that we talked about previously. And start working on a draft floor plan. And then, once you have a draft floor plan. Going into what we call the user groups. So ultimately take that floor plan back and we'll work with. Individual groups of teachers by their discourse. So an example is if you want to know more feedback in regards to. Your lab settings, you would be talking with your science teachers, your ag teachers, um, your health person. Um, tech ed, things like that. If you're looking at individual room designs, you'd be looking at math science, social studies and the language arts. Um, specialists, you might be looking at size of conference rooms or breakout flex areas. Um, buildings and grounds. All these different people that are actually using that space. And you're looking at it from a standpoint of the educational values of the layout. You're also looking at your ability to sustain it, clean it, maintain it. Um, what type of materials they're looking at with longevity. So. Those are the start of the conversations in the next sixty days. And as they start developing a stronger draft, then that's going to come back to you. So, and it gives you an update on what's going to be happening in the next sixty days to those three different areas.
Is that the, the, when, when the, uh, kind of the first draft. Layout is, uh, completed, is that when these follow-on committee, citizen committees are, are going to get.
Yep.
Pointed and involved.
Yep, it will start with the user groups, um, to try to get that to be a stronger draft before it's brought to the other groups. Um, and then you kind of have your, whatever you want to call that, your seventy or eighty percent solution. And some of the lies that got you there, so that as you then communicating that out with other people, they have an understanding of how you got to where you did.
I'm excited to see how this process works. I think it will. It's a strong, um, type of process where the people first who are using. Those spaces are really the experts and they're involved on the front end. I appreciate that.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, no, no action. Okay. Next, uh, we're on to new business, the annexation. We already covered that topic. Um, we're on to resignation retirement requests.
And we would ask the board to consider accepting, uh, retirement from Ms. Julie Lowe and. Want to acknowledge that we greatly appreciate her service to the school district. And then also the resignation of Mr. Trevor Van Lannan and thank him for his service to the district. So one resignation, one retirement.
With your motion, I'll go, Ken. You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? Okay. Motion by Ken, second by Adam to approve the, uh, uh, resignation and one retirement request. Volunteer?
I.
opposed. Motion carried. Appendix A, pay schedule revisions.
So as you're aware, at a previous board, um, we made the proposal and you took the action to approve rescinding the three. Three activity requirement that had previously been in place for all certified staff. And one of the things that we now need to swing back and, and close the loop on is. There are still some of these activities that, as you can imagine, are still happening. If they're athletic activities, we already have structure in place to cuddle that. But when they are a building level activity, where maybe they're doing a, a family night at an elementary or middle school dance or something like that. Where they need staff into support, we needed to come up with a way to compensate folks for their efforts. And so we're proposing. Twenty-five dollar flat rate for a building level event, um, be added into appendix A.
Glenn, I think that makes sense with what we've done with other things. I think that numbers seems reasonable. So. With that, I would, um, move to approve this change to appendix A.
Motion by Jan to approve the appendix A pay schedule revision as discussed. You have a second? I'll say it. Second by Brian. Open it up for discussion.
So that's at. Any activity, it doesn't matter during the day or after evening, like you had mentioned a couple of them, like. Parents' night or anything like that, or, um.
These would be, these would be like an after hour situation. So if, if they're outside of a contractual hours and they're going to do something after school. Then the principal had latitude to use that. Um, so it would not be intended to use that if they're currently working on contracted hours.
Any other questions? Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
I.
opposed. Motion carried. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two finance audit review.
And Kimson, just here receiving finance audit review.
All right, I'm here tonight to, uh, talk to you about the twenty-one, twenty-two audit. Um, we're audited each year. Our fiscal year ends June thirtieth and then the auditors come in August. They, uh, file the final paperwork with the state in December and now, um, this brings you this result here. So there is the. Large eighty-six page document, as you stated, um, that you can read through. There's also an interpretive summary in your packet and an audit finding document. So I just wanted to walk you through. Um, those audit findings, but first of all, uh, this audit is a clean audit. So the auditors did their review. Um, they tested a lot of our transactions and felt that we are materially. Uh, stating accurately our information. So this is good. This is what helps us borrow money and, um. Do all that stuff. So anyway, um, there were some audit findings. Because they look at the federal funds in detail. So we receive in more than a million dollars a, a year for federal funds. So they have to do a very specific audit. And, um, when they're looking at the federal funds, they pick something and I don't know what they're going to pick until they come. So this year they picked AGR, which you're going to hear about next. And they picked, um, ECF, which is our emergency connectivity fund. We got one-to-one devices. So with AGR, there are a couple of actions or audit findings in here. And basically what that states is, one. Um, when you, the board are hearing from the principals regarding that. Um, they want you to take formal action and that's why you see it now in new business. So you're supposed to formally approve those goals before it used to be just more in the information part of the board meeting. So it's just, uh, kind of. It's just an administrative type thing that we need to do. And then also when we're filing our financial report from the report that you're hearing, uh, there were some discrepancies and now, uh, Heather King guess is going to be. Uh, reviewing that before it's filed. So this is all good. You know, we're learning things as we go. Um, also with the, when we bought our one-to-one devices, we were relying on a quote that we received. Back when we started to replace all of our one-to-one devices and they wanted us to have a brand new quote. Um, this year, so that was, um, under procurement policy, another finding. So now we know. Can't, uh, use that. So none of our federal funds were in jeopardy. It's just that these are things that we need to work on and, and get better with. Um, so if you have any questions on the audit or if you do read through it and you, you want to ask me something, please feel free to email me. Is there any questions tonight?
The same company that audit that us.
Yes. Uh, Clifton Larson Allen, they audit, um, many school districts, or just one of many.
How, how does that process take place? I mean, what, what's the timeframe, time coming from you? Are they here? Like, how? Just walk us through that a little bit.
Um, so our fiscal year ends in June, June thirtieth. Um, then usually the month of July, we're closing the books for the year. And they come the second week of August or sometimes the first week of August and they're here for an entire week. And, um, they work through all of our transactions. Uh, we do provide them information ahead of time, but they select samples during that time and interview each one of us to make sure our internal controls. Are in place. Um, and then there's like follow-up questions for the next several months until that December due date that they. Uh, file it with the state. So, um, but it's primarily one heavy duty week, uh, audit.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And that was just information. Like, you don't, you don't need any action on it, or do we do need an action?
Yes, there's action possible.
Um, no, I just need it in the minutes that you.
Okay.
Have it.
Got it.
And you've reviewed it.
That's interesting. We'll take a. Momentary break here while, uh, Dean had to use the restroom, correct? Yeah, you can, right? Yeah, let's do that. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three mid-year AGR report. I just want to give up and give us the. Review there, we can keep on moving.
Good evening, everyone. Um, typically I would not be hurt of your biannual presentation. And the, from the principals regarding AGR, uh, but I thought it would be really helpful to, for our newer board members to just get some information about. AGR's general overview and perhaps members of the community who are listening as well, um, to help them have a better understanding of what AGR is. So AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction Program. Um, this program was formerly known as the Sage Program, which was Student Achievement Guarantee in Education. Um, it's a categorical state, categorical state aid program that provides funds to schools with low-income students. Primarily in grades five to third grade, if we meet certain statutory requirements, which I'll go over shortly. Uh, the goal of the program is exactly what it says in the title. It's to, um, decrease that achievement gap that currently exists between. Our students who are economically disadvantaged and their non-economically disadvantaged peers. Um, so two thousand fifteen is when the program changed from Sage to AGR. The reason for the change is because Sage was really restrictive in how it allowed schools to. Use the funds in order to reduce the achievement gap. It only allowed it through classroom size reduction. So when they changed the program in two thousand fifteen, the purpose was to give schools more tools or options to address that achievement gap. So in addition to class size production, um, it includes one-to-one tutoring and instructional coaching. Um, so the funding works by targeting funding to schools with low-income students. Um, it's funded by a some certain amount that's prorated among all low-income pupils, um, that are in participating grades. And so there is a set amount that the state designates for the AGR program. And all of the students who qualify as low income in schools that are AGR schools get that same amount. So specifically what that looks like for, uh, the state of Wisconsin, or for the state of Wisconsin this year. Is that the per pupil amount, uh, for students who are low income is two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, the allocation for Abrams this year is ninety-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the allocate occasion for Oknot Falls Elementary School is three hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and three cents.
So. If I can ask right there, so what I'm quickly calculating is that about one quarter of the students. And our student body would be in a low income, economically disadvantaged range.
Um, yes. So our statute requirements that we have to meet to, in order to be part of the AGR program. Is that we have to complete a five-year AGR, um, contract and application. Uh, but we need to plan specifically what strategy or strategies we're going to use by school. Um, that's a school implementation, though we don't have to use the same strategies across the district. Annually, we report to the DPI, uh, the four things that you see there, including. The class sizes and the, uh, low-income student counts. The description of strategies the school board plans to implement, the strategies the school board did implement, and end of the year financial report. You might be looking at that and wondering, okay, why do we have a plan to implement and what we did implement? Well, the reason for that would be that, for example, if you plan to implement, um, smaller class sizes. And then you have a number of students who move into that grade level. Um, you would probably, you would shift to most likely one of the other strategies, rather than hiring an additional teacher mid-year, um, for the smaller class sizes. And so, um, it's also requirements to report to the school board at the end of every semester, if ever here today. Uh, the implementation of the required strategies, the performance objectives and progress in closing the achievement gap. So, because that's what we're reporting, I'm going to shift it over, uh, to our principals so they can share with you that information.
Okay, so, um, I'm Mesa Hensa, Principal of Oknot Falls Elementary. Um, and so as Heather just, um, spoke, um, a couple of minutes ago, there are three different options, um, for strategies that we use. So there's class size reduction, instructional coaching and one-to-one tutoring. Um, as you can see, Abrams, um, they just use all class size reduction, um, because they were able to keep their class sizes under eighteen. Um, we eventually weren't able to do that. We, we did have to go up, um, for two or three levels. So. For kindergarten and first grade, we did class size reduction and we kept it at eighteen or less, but then for grades second to third, um, we did instructional coaching. All right. Um, so these are the AGR goals that we, um, that we have worked with our teams on and what we have set. Um, that we're looking for you guys to approve that in moving forward. So in kindergarten and first grade, um. We use an assessment program called Fast Bridge Learning. Um, and that is a normative program that, um, is across the country so that we can see how our kids are comparing to. Other kids, not just the kids within our district. Uh, and so what we are looking for, um, we have two different, we have it tiered. So we look at our kids that, um, come into us at the beginning of the year, um, either at or above grade level expectations. And we set a goal that ninety percent of those students will make adequate growth, that years growth that we are looking for. That they maintain that being. will make adequate growth, that years growth that we are looking for, that they maintain that being at or above. Um and then we look at our students that start out the year below our expectations. And we're looking to take fifty percent of those kids and move them to a year and some extra, like kind of like a year and a half kind of a game, so we can really work to close that gap, which is what AGR is looking for us to do. Um and so we do that in both literacy and in math. So we have that same type of a goal and we just use different portions of that assessment within Fast Bridge. When you look at second and third grade, um we use our star, um the star reading assessment. Um again, it's a norm um test that we give our kids multiple times throughout the year. So we can compare our students to those students across the country that are in those same grade levels and that are scoring the same as our kids starting out, and then where are they ending up? So we can kind of see how we're comparing. So again, we have that tiered approach where we look at our kids that are coming in at the beginning of the year that are at our expectations or above, and having them make that expected years growth. And then our students that are starting out below, we're looking for fifty percent of them to make a year and a years, more than a years gain. Um so we can close that gap, so they're starting to meet um and join their peers.
That these target goals or goal targets, is that just for the students that qualify? They cannot economically qualify? That's everybody?
It's everybody. Yeah, so we compare them, all of them. Um but we're, you know, we're, you know, always monitoring kind of in the, you know, the back that we're trying to make sure we're closing that gap for all of the kids. But the way the funding works, it's it's specifically funded for our low income students, but we, this goal is for all of our students.
Who are um at the fifty first, or fifty percent students below grade in October. Could you identify a couple of the strategies that are used to help them gain that year in that amount of time?
Um when we're working with um all of our students, we're looking at where they're at, but those lower ones. Um we have a program that um both of the elementary schools have implemented this year. We have partnered with um the AmeriCore Reading Program. Um and so we have additional tutors that are coming into our buildings to um to catch some of our kids that are kind of our bubble kids. Um the other, the other kids that are below um are receiving additional interventions through our interventionists in both math and in reading um to kind of close those gaps. Um we have grade level meetings. We have much, we're meeting a lot more in uh that we have this year than we have in the past. Um to really um build that collaboration between our interventionists and our classroom teachers. So we're making sure that we're doing the same things with our kids um and working on the same skills so that we're not confusing the kids and giving them too many learning targets. We're really focused on one. So we can make sure that we're making those extra gains to do that.
Thanks.
And then what I should have said, um we talked about our strategies earlier, is that um our interventionists are fantastic. And so um we have a math interventionist who also serves as a coach um for both buildings. And they do a phenomenal job with with our staff, just coaching them up and giving them just really innovative um techniques um to help reach a lot of our kids that are some of our struggling learners. Our reading, both reading specialists in our building, we also have a reading coach, so it's just been phenomenal, the amount of support that our staff um have access to every day when they need support. Um so we decided um in looking at it, um in the past, we have, you should have received um the report that we normal, that we have to submit to DPI. And as Lisa and I were working on this, we're like, well, this doesn't really tell you a whole lot, is what we were kind of feeling. It's just a bunch of words and numbers. So um what we decided to do this year, you still have this information, so if you have questions, you can obviously ask us. Um but we, what we decided to do this year is kind of um take our um data warehouse and we are able to combine our schools um and look at kind of overall, how is our district doing at the elementary level in these areas? So you can see, um we put up some of the graphs. So in kindergarten, like I said, we use Fast Bridge. Um and what we look at is letter sounds. So when they're coming in at the beginning of the year, we test our kids to see how many letter sounds they know. Um and you can see we had a very low percentage that actually um were below grade level expectation. Um and part of that is because when we come in, we don't expect them to know any letter sounds. We're hoping that they know their letters, and then we are going to be instructing them on their letter sounds. So that's why you see that really big green, that green area is because they came in knowing a few letter sounds that we were expecting them to know a few. Um and then you can see mid-year, our red actually has grown, which is not what we're looking for to happen. Uh but the reason that happens is because at the beginning of the year, we have such really, and I don't want it to sound bad, but we have very low expectations. We don't need them to know very many letter sounds. But then mid-year, we do expect them to know almost all of their letter sounds already. So that gap, so that's gonna grow a little bit. But what you'll see um when we show you the graphs, where we show you all three, beginning, middle, and end, is that red will get smaller again, and it'll get back to that because they have to know more right now than what they did at the beginning of the year, so those expectations change. So that's why you kind of see that and they're kind of when you look at it, I'm like, oh my gosh, it's going the wrong way. It's not what they want to see. Um so that's kind of why you see that. But we wanted to show you because that's what, that's what are, that's what's happening right now. Um in kindergarten, we also test them on their number ID, so knowing those numbers um up as high as we do. And again, that has gone that same way with letter sounds, because when they come in, we expect them to know like one to ten. Well, mid-year, we need them to know a lot more than one to ten. We're up to, you know, thirty, like, you know, up into the thirties. So that expectation grows, so we're just not quite there, but then you'll see that um that red go down because they'll have gotten all of that instruction. Um you can see in uh first grade, um we do um decodable words. So what that means is that it's usually three sounds, and they can say those sounds and tell you what the word is. So like cat. They can do the c- act and say cat. So that's what we need them to be able to do for that. Um you can see that middle graph is very small because we don't test all of the kids in um like that October range. We only do a portion of the kids um in there. So you can see that that one is about the same uh for the beginning of the year until now. Again, that's a skill that they're gaining um throughout the year, so we don't have that expectation. Uh the last one on there for first grade is automaticity. Um we test them in math, and so they are on a computer and they are taking um with math problems and they just need to type in the answer. So we're trying to get them to be as fluent as possible and knowing um the answers to those problems. And you can see that we kind of have a roughly that same, that middle graph. Again, we don't test everyone. Um we just test that's um that lower level, that the low grade level, that's the group that we test, and you can see that they made some good gains. Um and our graphs are about the same right now. Okay. So our combined data for second and third grade um looks good. So you can see um that that growth is happening here. Um the the first graph is beginning, second graph obviously is is um mid-year or winter, um which is similar on the the crafts earlier that I showed you. Um so looking at the schools um from a district district perspective, all of our numbers are in, going in the right direction. So you're gonna see, you know, from the fall to winter, that the students who are not making benchmark, that red area is closing. And the students who are making, um who are at or above the green section is getting larger. And that's what we want to see. We want to see gaps closing and so the data for our second and third grade is is trending towards, we need it to be for growth.
Thank you for putting in this format, by the way. You know, a lot of us, some of us have been on the board for a while and some, some are new to the board, but like trying to decode that and try to really pay attention. Is is more challenging than what you're showing here. This has been. Thank you.
I just want to quickly go back to Jan's question about the percentage, because at the moment stepping back in the process a little bit. I just want to clarify, AGR is five K to third grade. And so, and this is those, that dollar amount is per low income student in those grades. So I haven't done the calculation for a percentage of students in five K to third grade district line who are, who qualify as low income. Um so I can't say for certainty, that's, I think we actually had a, had a higher percentage than, I mean, twenty five percent.
I was just looking basically at what the per pupil amount was and looking at what the point was going to each school. It was just a rough estimation I was thinking of, so, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Case is being, I don't think I know, finance audit review or the AGR report, they just needed to be in new business, but we don't have actions against either one, correct?
I think with the, with the AGR.
The goals and the progress.
Yes, okay, so finance, no, the AGR, yes. Okay, alright, so just back in that finance audit review, that's a no action, so I wanted to confirm a hundred percent on that. And then, um, okay, so we need a motion to approve the AGR goals as presented. Motion by Sarah, I think Adam got in by a whisker, so. Any other, any other discussion, question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Uh board meeting video recordings.
So some of you may or may not have been on the board. But prior to approximately October of two thousand twenty, board meetings were not uh available to the public virtually. And, you know, we looked for silver linings from the COVID pandemic. One of the things that happened was we were required to get more technological quickly, um whether it was what we were doing in our classroom or how we did board meetings. So, one of the things that had come forward in that timeframe was how we potentially utilize the technology that we have to allow people to um join us in a board meeting without having to physically be present. And we did that. Um and big thanks to our technology department because for, I'll say, I just happen to know that in CISA eight, a majority of our districts do not have this capability. Um and I think a lot of that has to do with the resources that our communities have supplied us with and the members of our team who have learned how to use those tools. So with that, I I bring that forward because it was a learning curve, as you can imagine. Um that we've been implementing it, and we do have people that join us each month. One of the actions that was taken by the board, and this action was back in August of twenty two, was that we make these available to folks after the board meeting. So prior to that time, people could join us real time without physically being here, but then those were not made public after the fact. And it was brought forward by members of the community is to, they would really appreciate if those were brought forward and they could see them, you know, a week later, because maybe they were involved in working, they couldn't be here, they couldn't join real time virtually. And so you, the board, took action to do that back in August of twenty two. At that point, what we had then done was we said that any meetings um that were available at that time and moving forward. And if I remember correctly, I'd have to go back to the minutes, but I think it was for as long as they're available. Because obviously, we utilize um a YouTube channel to make that happen, and so you were thoughtful as a board that if that ever goes away, then our ability to do that may not be in perpetuity, you know, forever. Now it has come forward that um members of the community have said, you know, there were actually board meetings that were public for a while, and then all of a sudden they weren't public. And the word transparency was brought forward again. Um so I just wanted to address that question. When we first started doing this, it was a, it was a learning curve for us. So we were kind of learning as we go. And at the time that we were um providing this opportunity, we didn't have a full handle on the whole public versus non-public after the fact. And so we identified then later on that some of these things were public and that was not the intent initially. And so we took them off the public domain. And so that's why some people saw them out there and they were public and then they went away and they were not. So now what I'm bringing to you, the board, is the question has been posed. Do you want to go back to pre-August of twenty two and make those YouTube recorded board meetings public? Um and if you decide to take that action tonight, then I would just work with Cory and the members of the um tech team to make those public. So, and it's my understanding again that it goes back to approximately October of two thousand twenty. Um again, one thing that I will pitch out there in talking with Cory, there, he's gonna have to look at it, but he thinks that there's actually one meeting that she doesn't, doesn't seem to have. I mean, thinking that's January of twenty one, but it's not for sure. But again, whatever we have, we will make public. So.
I do recall something about a meeting, whatever month it would have been, or it kind of got to the end of the meeting and there was some notation that the recording, the equipment wasn't working and it wasn't being recorded. I think that was kind of a one up.
There was a couple, there was a couple of different times where we, we've experienced again. Um it sounds like an excuse, but it's it's the truth, a learning curve where um we started a recording and we ran into some issues where for whatever reason, the people on the other side of the recording were five or ten minutes behind and things were not working the way we wanted them to. And so we actually shut it down and then restarted it again. So if you move forward with this, for some of the board meetings, it might actually be like two or three different videos making up one board meeting. Um and that was again, just us learning how to do this, so.
Consensus or you need a motion or?
We would ask that you make a motion to take action to say, go back and whatever you have, make it public.
Oh, go ahead, make that motion to make whatever is available public.
I'll second.
Much my Brian, second to Sarah.
Just for clarification, Cory, as it appeared on the agenda, I think um we can clean that up a little bit. Just if you see it on the agenda, it doesn't quite make sense.
So, any, any board meetings that were part of our YouTube recording process prior to August of twenty two, the intent would be to go back and have our tech team identify those and whatever we have in the system that we can make public, we would do so.
I think it would read something online, right? The board, the board will consider uh making pre or uh recorded board meetings that were prior to the August of twenty two, August of twenty two, decision to make them public would make those meetings, meetings available if they are, or make them public if they are available. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Good. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I think that brings us to closed session.
I'll move to consider convening in a closed session for some discussion. Specify public business, one of our competitive bargaining reasons required for session. Specifically to discuss the potential sale of district real estate in pursuit of to consider the employment, promote, and compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee or which the board has jurisdiction. Specifically to discuss three separate complaint and investigation processes and discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Second, second by Jan. Jan, if you can do a roll call.
Sure. Don't look.
Yes.
Early.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Adler.
Yes.
Strands, yes. Garber.
Yes.
Seven zero.